Somebody's got noise here in the background.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 4th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. This meeting is being conducted under the offices of Governor Andrew Cuomo's Executive Order Number 202.72, which allows virtual meetings for public officers. I first confirmed that every member is alone, so there's no undue influence on your vote. Ms. Weiser?
I am alone.
Ms. Wasser?
I am alone.
Mr. Pickett?
I am alone.
Mr. Oliver?
I am alone.
Ms. Denapoli?
I'm alone.
And Vice Chair Dexter?
I'm alone.
Please join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for what is called Small, which is a second family dwelling at 148 Cream Street. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Thank you. And Councilman Krepnek, did anyone sign up to discuss this application?
No one did.
Thank you. So then, I don't think we have any comments from consultants, except for maybe Mr. Sotero and Ms. Moss?
Um, the only thing... I'm sorry. The only thing that I just need to take a quick look at is just the erosion control plan. And I think, Tad, we need them to... Have they already applied for a local erosion sediment control permit?
I believe they have. I don't think we have any topography shown on it.
Yes, that's right. That's right. We looked at that.
So, the reason why I'm asking is I heard a rumor today that the location might need to change a bit based on this, or am I wrong? I don't know.
We won't know. We won't know until the topography is in.
Okay. Mr. Berta, you're hearing all this. Is there anything you'd like to add about the application?
Yes, we actually, we just got the, Dan Coller from Hudson Land Design is doing the septic design. And he just finished up the topo today. And we are, the building is shifting about five feet further back in the property.
Thank you. So, we're going to adjourn the public hearing at some point. That means to December 2nd, to allow you to get through this process so we know we're approving where it is. If that makes sense? Thank you.
Not a problem at all.
Any other comments from consultants, Ms. Paul Dora or Ms. Axelson? Any comments from the board? Just raise your hand. No. This is a pretty simple one. For anyone from the public watching, this is basically a residence, because it's on a county highway, we had to refer to Dutchess County Planning Department, who responded that it's a matter of local concern. So, we're just going to wait until we have the erosion sediment control permit issues resolved. So, there being no public comment, no other comments from the board, make it a motion to adjourn this public hearing to December 2nd.
I'll make the motion. Brent Pickett?
Thank you.
Second and Weiser?
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Any ayes or extensions? There being none, motion carries. Mr. Berta, we'll see you in a month, not before.
I'll see you in a month. Okay, everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You too.
Yeah.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a workshop for Hyde Park Town Center Park Plaza. This would be for Phase 2 of the overall process, of the overall site plan. And Ms. Leiboltz is here. I'm just going to turn it over to you, but this is, if you recall, if anyone listening would recall, we phased this so that they can pull a building permit to re-clad, basically redo the exterior of the existing main building, where Antonella's is in CBS. This includes changing roof lines, a really attractive package. We were able to hear from Dutchess County Planning today on that, so we can take action on Phase 1 later on this evening. Phase 2 involves the rest of the site plan. I believe that even some changes have been made. For talking to Kelly earlier today, just based on from the last glance we have, I believe, Kelly, you said that the Northern daycare will not be part of this application now?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Kelly Leiboltz from KRC. Unfortunately, the daycare that was originally proposed, again, so just to remind everyone, I call it Winchester Medical, the daycare that's on the northern part of the property is moving into the space that was formerly occupied by Williams Lumber. For, I think everyone knows that Williams Lumber has left, or is in the process of leaving that space. We were hoping to put another daycare in that northern end of the building, which was an easy move-in for them. I think the tenant has decided to go elsewhere. So, that space unfortunately will remain vacant, but we're still seeking the approval of the Williams Lumber conversion to allow the daycare to move in there. We did provide you with a fairly substantial cover letter, October 20th, that I, hoping addressed all of the comments that the board had raised and the consultants raised. I will not go through each and every one of those items. I think the bulk pertained to landscaping was some of the biggest things that we spent time on. We did go back, if you recall, originally, we were talking about the fact that there are septic systems in the parking lot. So, although it looks like a big parking lot, that you could put trees really anywhere, there are limitations underground. We had Joe Berger's office put together and give you a plan of the existing condition, so you could see the limits of those. We did come up with a way to put two new trees into the existing parking lot. That's in addition to all the boxwoods that were proposing along the front of the building. And we did add another tree, what I will call the car seat little hook, it's the only way to describe it. I think that was a hornbeam that we added in there as well. So, three new hornbeams per our last meeting. And that's really, other than, I will just call them sort of ministerial changes, labeling and so forth, that, you know, Liz and the planning board had asked for. I think that summarizes the bulk of it.
So, Kelly, can you tell us about the expansion area that surrounds those SDSs? It's limiting additional landscaping?
Yes. What happens is there are SDSs that are underneath of the parking lot. And I asked Michelle Zurfus of Burger Engineering just to give me a description of what the limiting factors are and why on the plan you see a 35-foot radius around those absorption fields. And she provided me with an email that I can share with you. She indicated that the two painted rectangular area are on top of the expansion area. Trees are not allowed on absorption fields. The Dutchess County Standards and New York State DEC standards require 35 feet between absorption fields and stormwater rain gardens. If trees are in a lawn within 35 feet of an absorption field, the runoff will infiltrate across the spread of the lawn and not in a concentrated collection point. Currently, the runoff runs over the parking lot to the road. Cutting holes in the asphalt will provide concentrated collection points for runoff. Further, these collection points would be up slope of the absorption fields. And that is why we proposed the two rectangular areas that were shown on the plan.
I want to make sure everybody got that, because that's, that was sort of the issue that we had about trying to break up the expansive parking, was with the location of the SDS. And then, when we got the revised plans that showed it, I wasn't sure what the absorption area was, but if you look on your plans, you'll see there's not really a lot of location to put any more landscaping, particularly trees. And they chose the ones they had, or the areas they could find. In addition, Ms. Moss had discussed it. We think that because it's, they're going to be fairly small diamonds, we were suggesting maybe a Japanese lilac. Those are the ones that bloom, big white lilacs, syringa, reticulata. Anyway, we also have those as part of the town re-landscaping of Route 9 with the new sidewalks. Those trees have been put there too, so there's some symmetry there as well. But we're open to hearing other ideas, but I think that that's probably all we're going to get. And I want to point out again that our code does actually allow for the diamonds in parking lots with trees, as well as the landscaped islands. So, thank you, Kelly, for explaining that. Anything else you want to add?
I think that's it, unless the board has any questions, you know, that I'm happy to answer.
I'll turn it over to... By the way, I thought you did an excellent job with the responses. It was very detailed. I want to point out a couple of other things. One, we had discussion last time about the propane tanks that Williams Lumber left in the rear of the area being removed. And I was there, so was Pete, Mr. Sotero. They have been removed. While I was there, I took some pictures. I was actually there with Board Member Weiser and Board Member Denapoli after a meeting, an in-person meeting at Town Hall today. And we noticed that there's a lot of debris left over that Williams just sort of threw out in the back. I spoke to Ms. Leiboltz about it. They're going to take a look and see what they can just haul away. There's also some pictures. I spoke to Ms. Leiboltz about this too. There's some downspouts on the Williams portion of the building in the rear that just go directly onto the road. There's other pictures of where downspouts that are supposed to be going into landscaped islands are actually going right into the road again. I'll have Liz show those, because I emailed that to her earlier. I also, while we were there, there's a metal plate that seems to be embedded in the asphalt that you would walk over as you walk up to the proposed playground area. Kelly didn't know what that was. I couldn't figure it out either. And then, last but not least, when we walked up to where the proposed playground is, that's actually fairly steep, not hugely steep, but fairly steep. If you go about 20 feet, you're risen about seven feet higher, then it flattens out. And so, I asked Kelly if they were going to be doing some grading to create some kind of path there for the kids, or what? So, that, she'll answer that for us in a little bit. But you can walk up the hill. It's just that it's a little more precarious, because it kind of leans over to the left toward the building, to the north. And I hadn't been aware, but the shed itself, they had to excavate as the shed went in, because it's, the soil is right up to the side of the foundation, the concrete foundation for that shed building. That was about it for what I saw today, took pictures for. Yeah?
Now, so you can narrate them?
Sure. Thank you, Liz.
So, let me share my screen. Why is it not showing? Here we go. Are you guys seeing my screen?
That's the metal plate.
That's the metal plate. Then, I'm going to show you other photographs.
That's some shelving and debris that's back there, that, some of it may be usable, that stacked to the right of it. I don't know, Williams may want it.
Okay.
This is one of the drain spouts in the front that I think is supposed to go into the landscape bed, but just going over.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a little while.
That's supposed to be going, that, that looks easily correctable. That's supposed to be going into the, I think, the bed, and it's going onto the sidewalk instead.
And then, there's another one like that. So, there's a few downspout issues.
That's in the front of the building as well, where it didn't go into the landscape bed and cause the wood to rot.
And then, there's this, it just looks like somebody didn't put something away.
Yeah, I don't, it, it looked like maybe salt for snow or something, and the liquid to the right of it, I, there's stuff in the bottom of that too, that I don't know what it is.
Okay.
Again, just debris.
Those are all the ones that I have, Michael, right?
Sorry, the one that showed, the one that's, I guess I didn't, wasn't able to have you open it. There's one more that showed the spout going onto the road directly in the back, would be facing the debris. Not that one. It's, it's at the back of the building. This is the front.
Oh.
This is the one that faces west, and that faces south. So, it just didn't come through. I apologize, Liz. But at any rate, Kelly said they're going to look at all this and figure out how to clear it up. Just want you guys to see.
All right.
So, let me take, Liz, let me turn it over to you.
Um, okay, and I'm gonna share a different screen. Let's see, how do I do that? Hang on. Um... Uh, I don't know if I need to new share. Hang on. Can you guys see this sketch illustration, or no? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, there's been discussion about, you know, having more landscaping in the middle of the parking lot. But as a result of consultation with Norm Gardner, who's an engineer and a principal at CPL, we discussed the circulation coming into the plaza and going around. And I discussed with him the concept of trying to have a one-way circulation for buses and trucks. Basically, coming into the plaza, going left or north, taking a right around the north end of the plaza. There's a bus drop-off area. I'll come back to that. Turning right, heading south behind, coming out here. There's another bus, well, the bus drop-off is going to end up being another place. And then, they continue clockwise and head out of the plaza. So, now I just want to give you, my recommendation is to create a system of signs here on this median, in front of the building, at the corner. I guess it would be the northwest corner and the northeast corner to, you know, direct this flow for buses and trucks going around. When I shared this with Norm Gardner, he expressed concern about where the buses were dropping off children and is recommending kind of a curbed island here with a sidewalk. So, it would eliminate a couple of parking spaces. The handicap space would have to be moved down to the west. Um, but it would be a defined area for the buses to drop off. And then, so that would be there. And then, his recommendation is a raised crosswalk here, which would alert buses and trucks to, you know, to slow down. It's signaling on either side. Um, so that's consistent with the drop-off area proposed for the northern end, even though I realize that's changed. Then, buses and trucks continue behind the building. And Norm thought it made more sense to create another curbed island sidewalk situation here, so the buses could line up with their doors, you know, on that side, and that would drop the children right onto a sidewalk area. Again, this crosswalk area on the southwest corner would be another raised crosswalk. And then, of course, you know, buses would continue. Now, the one thing that he and I discussed that he felt was acceptable was to still allow vehicles, not buses or trucks, but just regular old vehicles, to be able to go two-way here to this turnaround. Those could be employee parking spots or whatever. So, that was the one thing. He didn't feel that this turnaround area had to be eliminated, or that this two-way opportunity had to be eliminated. He just specifically agreed with me, and I guess this maybe came aboard at an agenda meeting, that one-way circulation is something the bus companies could get used to, and loading and unloading trucks could get used to. And it would eliminate a lot of potential conflicts. So, that's the recommendation there, and I feel like these, these are worthwhile improvements. And kind of balancing, you know, that this is an ongoing business in this area. They're trying to do some significant architectural upgrades and add some uses that would bring people to walk around in this plaza area could be good for all the businesses involved. So, I guess I feel like maybe there's an opportunity for trade-off here, and it sounds like it's maybe already decided that we won't do as much with planters here, these two trees, and the one in the, wherever the car seat is. This, I think.
Yes.
That should be sufficient. I had earlier in the project asked for a plaza, but again, I feel that it makes more sense at this point to focus on the architecture and these improved traffic circulation items. So, those are my big comments.
So, I forgot to add when I was making my comments about visiting today. Ms. Moss has referred consistently to a pinch point. It's between the edge of the bank drive-through and the
Oh.
southwest corner of Williams.
Yep.
When I walked, it appears to be about 20 feet wide, and I didn't scale it, but it's somewhere close to that. If you had two buses, each trying to leave and enter at the same time there, I believe that the school buses, they have a wide apparatus that holds their rearview mirrors, so they can see further back, because they're so long and wide, and there's kids involved. I think that if they tried to pass together, the, both the rearview mirrors on each of them would be taken off, because it's really not that wide. So, this also, in other words, enable the buses to very easily, without having to turn around, drop kids off by the front door, as well as be able to exit safely. So, and I also think you would not have to use the big, I'll call it a light bulb. I believe Ms. Wasser's referred to it that way, that turnaround. It's on the north side of the site. By the, yep.
Yes.
That one.
Just be a turnaround, a back-end turnaround.
Would you need it?
Um, well, you would only need it for cars backing in and then leaving. You don't need this big radius thing. But I just want to go back for a moment and reiterate, when you were talking about the pinch point in the southwest corner, that if we have the one-way circulation of buses and trucks going around, you shouldn't have an issue with two buses trying to get by at the same time.
That's what I said, this would solve that problem.
Gotcha. Sorry.
And I think it's plenty wide enough for a car and a bus to be going through, for the, there, there's some employee parking behind in the back, obviously. But I didn't, I don't see a lot of people turning around back there, except for employees, to be honest. So, I think that you could still allow that to be a two-way through. And this is just me thinking this. So, thank you. And obviously, the Northern daycare is not there anymore, so I don't know that it makes sense to create that drop-off area there, or to have a raised sidewalk to the playground, because it's not going to be used now. But we'll let Kelly address that when we're back to her. Anything else you want to add, Liz?
Those are the biggies. The last submittal was very responsive. A lot of comments were addressed. There are a couple of issues where Kelly appropriately responded, hey, we're not showing sign area in the sign table, because those are vacant spaces. And the same is kind of true for parking. I guess my feeling is, as long as the applicant is going through this process, why not get the parking table and the sign table filled in with placeholders with those either parking or sign calculations, just put them in place. And I believe that later on, they might be able to go for a separate sign permit, rather than come back and amend the site plan. In other words, let's set it forth, so they can fill vacancies as they go along. So, that's my concept for that.
I think that's a good concept. I always prefer people not to have to come back over and over again when they're having tenant changes like this. So, I believe we did something similar to that at the, what I'll call Stop and Shop Plaza, but Hyde Park Mall technically. They had, they showed locations, so they just came in for a quick sign permit. It was very easy. Anything else?
Just one more point to get clear on. There was discussion at the agenda meeting about having a parking analysis. And, you know, as reaching out to Norm Gardner about this traffic flow, I also spoke to David Hastings and sort of oriented him to do a parking analysis. But the concept was, do the parking analysis to see if we could eliminate spaces. And my feeling at this point is that these few improvements are more of a priority. And I'd kind of rather not have the parking analysis done unless the board feels it's necessary.
Um, I'll ask each of the board members to speak when we address it. Speaking personally, I don't. My biggest concern really was just, I mean, this is, it's a major change to change how a site flows traffic-wise. So, I wanted to make sure that, that we were making the safest and best response, best choice possible. So, thank you for all that. Mr. Sotero?
Yeah, a couple of things. As far as the plan here that Liz has up on the, on the screen, one thing with the raised crosswalks we have to look at is making sure that it's not going to impede any kind of drainage and create any kind of an icing-like issue on either side of the raised crosswalk. I don't remember the northern site, or the northern part of the site, all that well. I think there's a little bit more slope there, but I know on the southern end, it's pretty flat behind there. So, we just have to take a look at it to make sure that it's not going to, it's not going to trap any water or create, you know, an icing.
And Pete, just along those lines, we would, we would, for that reason and others, particularly with plowing and the fact that this is on a turn, not install a raised crosswalk. If there's other striping that we can do in advance of that, you know, just notices on the ground or any signage, we would prefer to do that. But, you know, generally, because of all of those items that you said, and again, this is on a 90-degree turn, it's not an ideal location for that raised crosswalk.
Yeah, I would just be, yeah, okay. So, I mean, I would agree with that. Again, we'll have to see with the rest of the planning board.
Yep, understood.
And, you know, you're right. We would need, if we're going to have a painted crosswalk there, similar to what we did on the town center north, we'd have to have some signage there just to warn, you know, motorists that there is a crosswalk ahead. It's just more of a CYA-type thing, but...
Yep.
So, that was that. And the, the other item that I was involved with, we had, we had some discussion about the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for the project. Back when Williams came in for the amended site plan approval in the back, where they built the shed, there was supposed to be a small bio-retention area there, but due to the fact that there is a tremendous amount of rock in the back, that they were not able to put that in. And so, as part of this application, Joe Berger, I believe, had provided an alternative whereby they would make sure that the roof leaders in the front of the plaza that you saw pictures of, you know, before, were piped into the small landscaped island in the front where the boxwoods were going to go. And that would, that would allow for stimulation. Like, instead of having some of the roof leaders in the front, I would say probably half of them do go into that small landscaped island, probably half of them discharge right to the parking lot. So, I spoke to Kelly last week after our agenda meeting, and we went over that. And I also spoke to Tad about that, and although, I will say for the record, Tad was not completely happy with that. She did like defer to me on that. So, I don't have an issue with that. And I spoke to, you know, to Kelly that, you know, the plan would have to include either taking out, you know, the soil in those islands, or like amending it, because they're pretty hard-packed now. You know, I would think they would have to do that anyways for the boxwoods. So, just on the final plan, if, you know, those, those leaders could be noted to go into the islands and then some kind of a soil amendment. So, I think that's pretty much it for me.
Do you have any concerns about the grading to get to reach the playground on the south side of the shed in the rear?
Uh, you know, Michael, I didn't really look at that. I'll be up that way tomorrow or Thursday. Oh, wait, what is tomorrow? Thursday? Yeah. So, I guess I'll be up that way tomorrow. So, I'm gonna, you know, I'll look at it. I don't remember that. I know it is a little, like, steep there, so...
It's not, I, it's, if I was a kid, I could run up the hill. It's not that big a deal. I just wanted to make sure that they, there was a safe approach, because I'd forgotten that you have to climb up a bit before you get to the flat area. Also, while I have you, Pete, if you see the second yellow box up from the bottom, there's a red arrow, and it's pointing to the southeast corner of the building. That's where that drain is emptying directly onto the road.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so, yeah, so we want them to show that to go into, I believe the picture showed that there was a landscaped area right there?
Nope, nope. There's, there's, this is the thing, there's two. One is, one is on the backside of the building. It's facing east. It goes directly into the road. And the one that, that Liz was able to show goes into a landscaped area that would be taken over by what Liz is, what Mr. Gardner proposed. It's, it's...
Okay. I'll take a look there. And then, I'll just, you know, I'll coordinate that with Kelly.
Thank you. Thanks, Pete.
Clear. Um, you know, Norm Gardner was aware, you know, of the configuration of the corner of the building. And I think the reason that he was proposing the raised crosswalk was to improve the visibility of that crosswalk from a corner of a building where vehicles are coming around over to a playground. And his whole emphasis was about kids moving safely in a very visible way over to the playground areas for both ends of the building. So, that's all.
Thank you. And Pete, did you have any comment on the, the the D E C or the regulations that Kelly quoted?
Yeah, you know, after our agenda meeting last week, that, that was part of my other discussion with her, and there were some emails that went back and forth between myself and Joe Berger. And, you know, the 35-foot is, is, you know, a DEC and a Health Department, you know, requirement from an infiltration, you know, practice. I don't know how they would, how like a Health Department would... how like a health department would, uh, you know, view a small cut in the, you know, the pavement, you know, as whether that would, you know, qualify. But I mean, I can understand their point and it is, you know, uh, 35-foot is, uh, the regulation to an infiltration area. So I'm okay with it as long as, you know, the planning board is.
Thank you. Just want to make sure we got that into the record that you were, uh, that you agreed.
Yep.
Ms. Moss, comments?
Uh, Pete, if you're out at the site tomorrow, I think there is a storm drain, um, uh, near the back, near the Williams shed. And depending on where that crosswalk goes, the storm drain, there may be a storm drain that's allowed to capture, uh, the water if there is a raised crossing there, depending on where you put the cross.
I think there is, Tad, yeah, yeah. From what I like, remember, the only thing is I think it may be more closer to the shed. May, oh, well, you know what? I think that there is one in that like corner as you round, you know, the curve. So yeah, I'll take a look at it.
You mean a, uh, do you mean a drain in the pavement?
Yeah.
It's, it's almost exactly between the main building and the shed. I was just there.
I, I think there's another one on the corner. Maybe it's further than the play area in the parking area, or maybe that's what that metal grate is covering. Um, a second, not a grate, a metal plate. Um, but anyway, the, the only other things that I, I have Chairman Dupree are possibly, uh, getting copies of the permits from the other agencies for the daycare to operate and consideration of Department of Health for septic.
Thank you. Because they're adding a bathroom? They're adding bathrooms?
Yes.
I have one quick thing that I just thought about, Tad. Do we need to, uh, do we need to have Joe submit something that's kind of an amendment to, you know, the SWIP for, uh, you know, the roof leaders going into the landscaped island in the front just to, just to close that out?
I, I would like something in writing because we've amended the SWIP once to account for those, um, planters, and now we're taking them out. So yes.
Right. Kelly, can you just go talk to Joe about that?
Yep, yep.
You know, something, something easy, you know, that's all. We're not looking for anything.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moss. Um, Ms. Polidoro? You're muted. Yes, you know.
I was going back to, um, see if we had referred this to Department of Health originally. Uh, last August, you had classified, it's not August, sorry, I'm looking for my date. Yeah, you classified the whole action as a type-two action. And we circulated it under Seeker and we sent it to county planning. Um, that was the August set that was typed and classified. Uh, so we don't need to classify the action again uh, because that was on the whole plan before it was phased. Uh, but we do need to officially refer it back to county planning for phase two. Heather Laverne Way wanted you to know, Kelly, that, uh, she did, you know, she took great effort to make sure that you got your, uh, response today so that you could start the architectural improvements.
Thank you. Thank you.
But, um, you know, she does want us to send the next package back to her once the traffic revisions are made. Um, other than that, I don't have any, I'm sending comments.
Okay, let me go to the board.
Ted is muted.
So we're not sending it to Department of Health?
Do we need to?
So we're, we're doing an uncoordinated review?
So I think if I can just intervene, I think Tad's question is related to is there a permit or an amended permit that's required by the Department of Health? Not necessarily a seeker issue, if I'm correct. And, um, so Tad will provide, um, either Joe Berger or Michelle can provide the town with a copy of whatever it is that we need to provide. And if it has to get sent to the Department of Health, it would not be a part of this seeker review, but it could be a condition of approval. It's so hopefully I tried to quantify that.
It's basically just having, uh, Mr. Berger or Ms. Zerfus tell us that you have adequate capacity.
Right.
Yeah, and we've done that. Yep, we've completed that analysis.
I think, I think we've done, we've, I think we've seen this before, so.
I remember this, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else? Uh, Ms. Wasser, comments?
Um, yes, thanks. So I appreciate the responsiveness, um, to the landscaping issue and the, um, the traffic patterns, but I wanted to revisit the parking analysis and the amount of parking on the space, including that 35 radius, what we call the light bulb. And whether, that's a lot of, I, I say, I, I haven't done analysis anecdotally. Uh, and I realize it's not fully occupied at the center right, right now, excuse me. But I'd really like to get, uh, some of the pervia, the impervious material removed. That's, that's see less impervious material at the site. Um, and since you're going to be doing some site redevelopment anyway, this would be the time to see if we can get rid of some of that sea of asphalt. Do you know what I'm referring to in that quote lightbulb shape in the back where it says radius 35? And we also talked about whether that could just spill out toward McDonald's as a, as a traffic exit for those cars backing up. We were talking about it about two minutes ago. Yes, that. And, um, that's more paved area. I'm not sure why it's necessary, but I also am referring to all of the parking spaces along, um, the eastern edge of, of the site.
You mean the western edge?
Yes. Well, not that far into the site, obviously, closer along the street. So I wanted to bring that up and find out from Ms. Leibolt her thinking on that. Yeah, because I know the board has leeway.
Um, so the, the, so first, the light bulb, if we go with the one-way traffic pattern, I don't know that it's necessary. That's first, um, but Kelly can address that. Second, I believe you also mentioned instead of having a light bulb, having, instead of having a turnaround, maybe having a road connect to that north-south roadway?
Yes.
So you could just drive a little bit north and then over to the.
Between the McDonald's and the other learning center, spilling out in that, that direction.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Do you want me to comment, Mr. Chairman, or no?
Yes, please do.
Okay. So with respect to the turnaround, it, it can be eliminated. Um, it was originally put in there as a thought to, when we were modifying some of the through traffic. And I think we've made so many changes, I'm almost absolutely confused where we are, but I know, I know where we are. Um, so I think that that can go away. If we wanted to do a little hammerhead there, we could do a little hammerhead for people to turn around. Um, with respect to the parking analysis and some of the changes that were being proposed, um, by, um, uh, Clark Patterson Lee. So, um, first I'll talk about the ones on the north. As Mr., uh, uh, Mr. Chairman had indicated, the, unfortunately, the tenant is not pursuing this space. And so I think making improvements there would be, you know, needless at this point until we know who's going into that space. So I'll, I'm just, for purposes of now, just going to disregard the two changes to the north. Um, on the changes to the south, I have a real difficult time with putting in a raised crosswalk. I just, I'm not a fan of them. I think I've been pretty, we have been pretty cooperative about trying to put improvements into the site. Um, I'm not a fan of the concrete curb. It further limits the throughway back there. There isn't a lot of room already. If we talk about the goal is to try to, um, provide the best safety for people, both pedestrians and vehicles there. Um, so if we keep that as the goal, I think there's other mechanisms that we could utilize rather than cutting off that asphalt area. And, and again, not a fan of raised crosswalks. Um, there's, um, you know, ballards or lighting, um, striping, signage, et cetera, that, um, we would much rather prefer doing there instead of those improvements. Um, and then lastly, with respect to the parking analysis, I do, um, understand and respect the board's position with respect to the parking. However, I do want to note that the applicant has significant vacant space in this building. And at this point, um, the plan that we're proposing is really the plan that we're asking the board to move forward with. We've, um, proposed what we think are significant improvements to the architecture of the building. And although in, you know, sort of a more utopian scenario where we would have perhaps a raw land site, we could consider some modifications to the parking in the islands. Um, but removing parking at this point, when we're having such a challenging time trying to get tenants into the space is a very difficult thing for us to absorb. Um, we do understand the board's desire to improve the site um, visually, aesthetically, and we are, um, trying to work and do as much as we can. We have also expended a significant amount of time and money, um, with the town outside of the planning boards, probably knowledge. Um, Pisa Terra has been very involved in this. And we've worked extensively with the town on the acquisition of the property along the entire strip of this, um, land and the property to the north. And although to many of the residents', um, eyes, it may seem like a seamless transaction, we have expended hours and hours of legal fees and coordination with the town in an effort to try to make this seamless for everyone for this transaction. And we're just asking for your, um, understanding of that and allowing us to move forward with the plan that we've proposed, um, in front of you tonight.
I just wanted to add, add to that for a moment. The, the proposed, I guess, drop-off area that's in pink to the, at the southeast corner of the building in the rear, that would eliminate a significant landscape area that you're supposed to be putting the stormwater in over there. Um, there's a tree and bushes, et cetera. So, uh, I, I mean, if that's the way you guys want to go, then yes, but you have to figure out another place for stormwater back in that corner because that's the only landscape bed you have to put anything into. Um, and as far as the front goes, I also would like to see less parking. I think we all always want to see less parking. But Pete, you may know, you will know more about this, but the town's plans, that's going to change everything along that, that eastern, uh, the western edge, right?
Um, it's not going to eliminate is, uh, any parking. Uh, no, we're going to be.
But you're going to, we're going to change the landscaping to.
Oh, in the front, yeah, absolutely.
In other words, there's, I know one of the goals was to provide more screening along the front side. So you would see less of the cars and less of the asphalt. I don't know what the final design looks like because I've, Tad and I have both seen various iterations. But I know that's going to, in other words, what's there now landscaping? And some of you will be very happy to know that all that blue grass will be gone at some point.
Yeah, I will be.
And the rocky stuff is going to be, and the rocks, that's all going to be gone. They're redesigning this entirely. So, um, that's just one thing to consider. I'm sorry, Ms. Wasser, let me go back to you.
No, I, I completely appreciate, um, the applicant's perspective on this. I, I get that and parking is very important for retail um, tenants. Um, but there are, sometimes there are, you know, there's green pavers, you know, where grass can grow through it. I would, I would love to see an area at least designated for future consideration. You know, if, if you're fully leased, I, I don't want to hinder you. Okay, I want you to go forward. That's not my goal. But, you know, there'll be a point at which you're going to be fully leased, hopefully. And, uh, if there's excessive asphalt there, you know, there are some alternatives to still allowing for parking, but making it green.
Um, I will, I'll also add that county planning has for years been dying to have them put a signature building to the left, right on Route nine, uh, as you first drive in the main entrance where Liz first, that's it, where Liz first asked for plaza. And I've always thought that would be terrific idea, but of course you can't put a structure there because that's where the septic is.
Right.
So it would need some sort of central sewer or a massive relocation, which I don't know where that would go on, on the site of where their SDS is. So, um, yeah. The, well, let's think about maybe an area you could consider at some point in the future reducing the parking, and that's probably the right area. But um, I, that, what I'd like to see personally, if they reduce the parking, is replace it with a building. And I'm being honest. Because that would, I think, be more inviting as well into the plaza by having some sort of quick anchor there. And I believe that the owners at one point had talked to, um, Starbucks about coming in, uh, at that location, but.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, they, they, they saw some more dilapidated parts of, of the town at the time and chose not to sadly, but always a goal, always a goal, always a goal. Anyway, thank you, Stephanie. Um, Kelly can respond to that, uh, later on about if there's any area for future non, sort of an unbanking of parking. Um, next, uh, Mr. Pickett?
Yes, I'd like to see that back parking area cleaned up. When you go through there, there's kind of a array of dumpsters that's helter-skelter. Um, and you've also got traffic. I don't know, there's six or eight dumpsters back there. So those had to be picked up and emptied and whatever. So you've got that traffic to deal with. Uh, there's cooking oil tank or tanks. Um, there's no designated parking back there, so it's kind of parking at will. The first one that gets there kind of sets the arrangement for the day. Um, and Michael already mentioned the pinch point there at the, uh, entrance if you come in from the north end. So I was thinking about, I'd like to have, if possible, almost everything one way. I don't know exactly how you'd set that up in designing, but at least, you know, coming from the north end would be one way. And maybe you would have room for a turnaround down at the, uh, south end where the old Williams used to be. But I would, uh, you know, a sign for arrows, ground arrows painted on the pavement, uh, everything kind of big, so you can't ignore it. Designated lanes along that east side of the property for, for cars to travel up and down and a dumpster layout. So at least it looks like some type of organization and, uh, then, uh, painted up or laid out, uh, parking areas. I think that could be a lot more efficient if they could get some of those cars parked closer to the west side of the building uh, in that back parking lot and make more room for buses, dumpsters, things like that. That's my, that's my input.
Thank you. If I got that right, you really think the back area can be better organized in terms of where the dumpsters are?
Um, yeah, it's just, it's all kind of helter-skelter.
No, no, I believe me, I know. We were back there today. I, I will say this, I, I may be arguing the way Mrs. Leibelt would, but, um, that's sometimes hard to do. You can have them lined up, but every time that the service provider picks it up and puts it down, they've kind of put it anywhere. And I, I'm imagining the way, when I looked at it, I'm imagining that each tenant has its own dumpster because there's, there'd be way too many otherwise. Um, but also to stripe, they, they show parking, designated parking in the rear. You're asking them to stripe it so that it becomes clearer because you're right, it's, it is sort of higgledy-piggledy, oops. Something doesn't like it when I use that word. It's a bit messy back there.
Yeah, and it's, I think they could be a lot more efficient on the parking and make more room for that north-south parkway. Um, and for the buses and the, the trucks that have to empty the dumpsters and whatever. Uh, you know, just to make sure that nobody gets hit, hurt.
So you, you would, you'd be arguing for, you'd be arguing for a one-way traffic pattern that would go around the building and then head south and then just keep on going?
If possible. And then, uh, you know, designated parking along, right alongside of the building because they tend to park out in the middle of the lot now versus from what I saw a couple of times, uh, right next, right near the building.
We saw that. Um, I believe some of that space is left for deliveries. That's what I'm guessing. But Kelly can address that because they, as I said, Kelly's already shown all the parking on there. It's just a matter of making it more clear, I think. Kelly, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, there is. Um, I, I mean, I do agree in the back. It is sort of helter-skelter and it is, um, challenging a lot of times with the back of the buildings, which is why we often design these days, you know, no real through access back there. Um, it's sort of the basement of a house, you know, where everyone hides everything. It is difficult to get it organized because regardless of what we, um, show on the plan and we try to get organized as far as the dumpsters, as you said, they get picked up and moved. And it is really the tenant space in the back, um, although people are coming through there. Um, we can stripe those spaces. I think that may neaten it up a little bit, um, in the back. And, um, that would perhaps help maybe a stripe down the middle where the road, uh, lanes are. Um, so I think striping would probably help organize it a bit back there.
Thank you, Kelly. I agree. Thank you, Brent. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you. I, again, just some type of layout so that people that are working back there, delivering, taking away dumpster, buses or whatever, have some kind of idea of what's supposed to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Napoli?
Good evening. Um, Kelly, do us all a favor and thank the owners again for their continued support in our town.
Um, thank you.
Down like we always appreciate it, but you know we are. Um, and, and particularly at these times when it's very, very difficult for so many people. Um, I also want to support and agree with Ms. Weiser about, Ms. Wasser, I'm sorry, with regards to the parking. Um, it would be good to try to decrease the parking that's closest to Route nine. And I do understand that with vacant buildings, not, not knowing exactly. Not knowing exactly what kind of tenants and the volume you will have, it could be hard to decide. I just don't understand, and this is more a question to my my board and my chairman. Is there, oh, because you're before us now, if we choose to forego. The reevaluation of parking and the assessment and the study of it, is there a way we can condition something for the future? Or is it now and only now because they're before us with a site?
That would be a Victoria question.
So, I mean, anytime they come in for a change to the site plan, it reopens the site plan, so.
But it's only then. So there's no way we could condition for something down the road?
No, you need a triggering event. And so, you know, if there was a change of use in one of the spaces that triggered additional site plan review, then you would have that opportunity. Or if a new building's proposed or if there was a structural change.
Okay.
But we we just can't say and come back in in six months.
Right. And here's a good example. Before the Berg-Stoutenberg historic structure was the office of Senator Serena. It was a restaurant when I first moved here. And at that time, I mean, it was German food and that's not my kind of food because I don't eat meat. But the parking area in the corner that's not really ever very crowded was used a lot. I'm sure Ann Dexter can tell you that because people, it was a hangout for a lot of people. So if that's, the the problem with some of this is as the uses change. So does your parking needs. And since this has been here for a while, I'm sure that's what they're thinking is we don't know what's going to be here. You also have, you also, when when Kelly refers to empty space, there's also the empty space that's on the north side of the Children's Medical Building. Those are underneath and they have some directly assigned parking associated with them. But if there's, if those were filled up and they did, when Freihoffers was down there, they did fill up a lot. People would go around and park and then just walk around the Berg-Stoutenberg House and get to it that way. So.
I was just trying.
Trying to argue for more parking.
Well, I was just trying to find an accommodation because I can understand. Limited resources, but I also understand if you're only before us now. This is a one shot to update the parking and reevaluate it. So I was trying to figure a middle ground, but obviously.
Diane, for for what it's worth, I've been working with this board for maybe thirteen years and. I don't think there's ever been a year where this 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 project has not been before the board.
I'm getting old. Yeah, this is gonna be the end.
Okay.
I'm moving next year, so this is it.
Well, then I take it back.
No, it's a good point. We do have a lot of empty spaces and I do understand, I know I'm pushing pretty hard and I do understand. Your desire to address this issue. There is a lot of vacant space there, the vet left, you know, if you kind of walk through, there's more vacant spaces than you may think. And we're very reluctant to try to take parking spaces away for two reasons, many of which you, oh, many of which you raised, but also. We don't know who who may come in and the space in the back is fairly significant. There were a lot of balls in the air and we had some significant moves that were occurring that we shared with. The chairman before the meeting, so he understood some of that. I'd rather not go over that on this public forum. But the other is just the pure expense. So although removing asphalt is, you know, we're really in a very difficult time. These applicants own restaurants. And if there was a harder hit group in these past few months in restaurants, you know, tell me who it is. They have been suffering financially. I know everyone has heard this, but they're still willing to put in a significant amount of money to change the architecture of the building, albeit it's going to help them. And hopefully, you know, we can fill this space. So we're asking, you know, if we can consider the parking the way that it is and and with the improvements that we've proposed.
My other question is with regards to the playground in the back. I would assume it would have to be leveled. I'm thinking if these are, if some of these children are little. That would be a very difficult climb as much as they might enjoy it, but also I don't know, are there ever physical handicapped children there? Would that prevent them from going up and enjoying the playground?
I think that we, in order to eliminate some of the valid concerns that everyone has raised, we'll ask Joe's office to just do a very simple grading plan and we'll just do a blow up or an eight and a half by eleven. And I think all those issues validly raised will be addressed.
It's, you know, it is, is we we walked on raw land today that's a little crooked, et cetera, and that's why I realized it had to be graded because. Or have steps built in or something because it's not going to be easy for.
Understood. Understood.
Let's also remember that as as I think Kelly pointed out into the record. Whenever the kids go to the playground, they have someone with them. They are not unattended and they are attended by two people, I believe, one on each side. So. In case there's still the discussion about the raised crosswalk. Which I, now that I think about it, I do understand when you said it's a ninety-degree turn, it does make it harder for plow, we, I think, keep hitting it because we have them. Behind Mavis. I drove that way today on my way to the site.
Yes.
We have the, we have a raised, we have a raised crosswalk. But that's coming straight on to it.
Right. But on a ninety-degree turn, it's very, very, it's kind of precarious with a plow.
And since Chris plows professionally sometimes, I'm gonna ask him for his opinion on that next. Anything else, Diane?
No, that's it.
Thanks for bringing that up about the playground. Mr. Oliver, comment?
Yeah, that was gonna be one of my comments. But firstly, I'd like to thank you, Kelly, and the owners for your dedication to quality development in our town continuously.
Thank you.
I hope that, you know, these improvements help you guys fill some of your vacancies.
Yes.
And really appreciate you guys working to kind of always, you know, meet our demands and see what we're trying to do. In regards to the proposed raised crosswalks. I think it would be a real maintenance nightmare, as you pointed out, for the winter time. Aside from it being on a ninety-degree angle, it's a spot that will collect water and then refreeze. And if we're talking about the safety of the kids and and obviously the. Teachers or aides. You know, that's, it's just gonna be a constant nightmare for the ice during the winter and I I think it's, you know, you're gonna have a lot of shading from the trees and stuff back there anyway and it's. Not a main, you know, main flow of the site, so it's often easily destroyed or overlooked. So. I I think, like you had pointed out earlier, there's other options that might better fit the safety concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I I figured that you, as soon as I heard it, I was like, I'm gonna ask Chris later on on that.
Oh, those, those, I'm sorry, absolute nightmares. They, they never do what you want them to do in the winter time.
And they usually end up, after the winter, we find that we have to go back and replace them because they just, when there's snow on the ground and you don't know where they are, the truck ends up hitting them and they end up getting broken up.
And that creates its own traffic hazard too, I know. So, Ms. Dexter?
What a fascinating discussion we are having. This is, I love this because this is, I believe this is what the planning board is supposed to do and. Kelly, again, thank, I just, I agree. Anybody who's trying to improve their properties right now deserves a medal because it's, it's so hard. The climate is so tough. I go back and I remember. When that plaza, I don't think, when it's filled and you have everything going. There are no spots. There's no spots left, depending on the businesses that go in. So. You know, we were talking about, did we want to do a parking analysis? I I don't think we need to do that at this point. You know, you do come in quite frequently. I would hope that, you know, we would see you again. You'll get some fabulous tenant who wants to do something that's a little bit different and wants to make some kind of a change and would come in and we could maybe explore it then, but right now. I mean, we don't have any problem. The problem is all you do is see pavement is because the, you know, the businesses need to go in there, but. Michael's right, back when it was a German restaurant and then it was the sushi place.
Yep.
It was mobbed. It was mobbed. And when we had the karate place, you would have fifty cars parked there on on karate night. So. You know, depending on the business and how it gets structured. I'm okay with not focusing on that at this moment. I think I really appreciate the extra trees, the two trees in the parking lot. I'm a, I'm a little worried that they're not going to really make it, but I'm, 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 I'm happy to, you know, give it a, give it a try. I think the boxwoods are gonna be lovely. I loved Brent's comments about the back. I like that that you'll take a look to make it a little bit more orderly because it. At one point it did have parking in the back detailed somewhere and it, it did seem to be a little bit more put together than it is now. So I think it just needs a little touch up. And then very interesting discussion about the the part, the the traffic flow. And part of me says, yeah, maybe if you just made everything, like Brent was saying, make everything one way. Then you just need to put, you know, big arrows and stripes and 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 just everybody does that. I still think little cars might pop in the wrong way. But that may be a great way to kind of just go with it. Just say, we're gonna, we're gonna go counterclock, or we're gonna go clockwise around the building. Put your signs up. And yeah, the little cars that work in the back and, you know.
They'll sneak through.
Exactly, exactly. But the majority of, you know, your deliveries and buses and. Anything else that wants to come through, that's how they have to go. That's how they have to go around.
Yep, yep, thank you.
That was very clear, Ann. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that's all. I'm just really happy that that we're, that we are looking at this again.
And wasn't there a disco in the site years ago?
I went there for one of my Christmas parties back in the day. It was the old Champion, before it was Champion, it was a. It was just a dance club. It wasn't really a disco. I mean, it was, it was the eighties.
So the reason why I say that is someone who used to work there as a bouncer. Sent me a picture of what the parking lot looked like at night when it was a dance club. And it was, it was packed.
Oh, it was packed.
Obviously dancing.
And then you had the Hyde Park Inn right next door.
I've been in there, yeah.
If you weren't into dancing, you went next door to to the Hyde Park Inn.
Hyde Park Inn, a real classy place.
It was, it was the classiest. Second only gathies.
The reason why I'm saying this is, I I also am always interested in seeing more green and less asphalt. But in this instance, I I personally am going to, I I guess I'm agreeing, in other words, I'm totally agreeing with what Kelly's sort of stating, which is this is a difficult time in the hospitality business. Kelly, hotels were just as hard as restaurants, both of them. And they're, they're related, but this is a difficult time and, you know, I. The Commissioner Rafter, who's head of county planning, had asked me about a year ago once what I thought would be a great new planning kind of course. And I said. One of the things that that I find that we don't get through all our training classes is to understand how financing is done for these kinds of improvements. Because I know, you know, and I've watched a lot of planning board meetings from other towns. It's because I'm that kind of nerd. A lot of people believe, I think, that it's just deep pockets that you can just say, oh, here, like you're the rich guy from Monopoly, you know, with the mustache. And that's not the case. It's much more complicated these days, whether you're going into private equity or bank financing, it's much more difficult. If you have private equity, you've got to be, why am I not getting a return on my investment here right now? And truthfully, destroying the asphalt doesn't really get any economic benefit for the applicant. If this were a different time, I hate to say this because you should still adhere to your strongest planning principles. Particularly during difficult times because they're gonna, whatever you decide to do will last. That noted, it's already here. It's not as though we're saying, oh, yeah, put up a cheap crappy build, excuse my language, a cheap building. We're getting a great building. We're getting some new landscaping. All of that, I think, is an improvement. And Pete, I, you're definitely right when you talked about amending the soil in those beds. People have just been walking over them. It's, they can barely even grow grass. You are, they will have to do something to amend it.
Yeah.
So, and I think that Ann's right, the the applicant will have to work initially when those two trees are planted, the diamonds, to make sure they're watered healthy, but that's just gator bags. Once they're established, they should be okay. We'll see. But that that will also, remember, just soften it ever so lightly. I wish there was more ways to do it. But because of the nature of the old-fashioned septic system there, it really does limit where we could add landscaping. So. At any rate, I'm just putting sort of my thoughts in there and we haven't heard from Ms. Weiser yet.
Hi there. So I'll just be quick. I do wholly agree with Vice Chair Dexter. I am definitely okay about. Not having the parking analysis given these times. And Chris, you actually changed my mind about the, about the raised crosswalk. I mean, up until you spoke, I was all like, yeah, I like the idea of the raised crosswalk because you can see it to to Liz's point, you can see it from a distance. And you will start to slow down before, but given the the hazards of, you know, when it's cold and it's raining and icy. And then also this destruction over the winter, I think that it does make sense to forego that, that choice. But so that's it.
I I literally destroy probably like five to ten of them a season, so I speak from experience.
So I have a question. So so Ann, you didn't really like what what my explanation was, you believe, like Chris better?
I, well, I don't think sign, actually, I don't think signs are really a deterrent. I think after a while, when when you see signs.
No, I know.
They become wallpaper. You don't notice them anymore. They really are ineffective.
No, I'm joking. I'm joking.
It's okay, Pete, but I really don't think signs are quite, are the solution. So.
Okay, we've heard from all the consultants. Kelly, I know you always take copious notes. So have I. Basically, the biggest thing I heard was. About looking at changing the traffic direction to one way, as well as to reducing the light bulb, as Stephanie calls it.
Yeah.
Which would actually save some money there too because it's not to be so much asphalt. I think Liz was kind of drawing in on it at the time. You'll need to talk, you'll need to look at the, what Liz, what Mr. Gardner proposed. I, there's a better way to have the kids dropped off. I think it's not a good idea to be on that back corner. Like I said, that's where the downspouts are. And it's pretty tight there too. I I still think maybe moving in the front, perhaps creating an area, like right now, you can park right by the doors too. Facing in, but maybe you should remove some of the stripes there and just have that be, or have it be hatched so that could be where the kids are. You lose two parking spaces, but who cares? People aren't gonna be parking every day in there. So. And that way you have a safe defined space for them. The other thing you heard was about dressing up, so to speak, the rear area to restripe for the parking areas and define the lane. A parking, or a parking, a driving lane, I'm sorry. And of course, I think we all agree with Stephanie and Diane that 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 less impervious is always better. For a variety of things, not just aesthetics, but also stormwater, et cetera. But in this case, it sounds like a majority are willing to let that one go this time. And it was noted by our attorney that you do come back often. So there will be, there will be additional opportunities. Maybe one day I'll I'll get that big building in the front that I've been dreaming.
I would love that.
Well, that, I I just think it'd make it more inviting to go along. And I I'm sorry that you lost the northern tenant. As I said to you earlier. He was talking to the town about another location all the time too. So I I knew he was gonna choose one or the other. So I wish, for your guys' sakes, that he'd chosen your location. But where he's, I think, when he chooses, it's actually a lot closer to his house. So that maybe, may have driven his decision too. Other than that, we were going to do, by motion, to refer the plan set to county planning at Ms. LeVaron Way's request. I had a chat message, a chat note from Ms. Paldoro that this, we should wait to refer your next iteration on this.
No, I think you should authorize Cynthia to send the next set tonight. So that.
Yes.
As soon as it comes in, Cynthia can send it out. I just don't think it's helpful for Heather to review this because there may be comments that are redundant or obsolete.
Kelly, does that sound okay to you?
Yes, that's, that sounds fine.
Perfect. And that'll give you a chance. They're not, actually, it looks like we're we're coming to. A meeting of the minds here. Put it that way. Yes, Ms. Atkinson.
Yes, um, okay, I I need to recap because, so. I'm, I guess what I'm hearing from the board is that the pedestrian improvements on the north end aren't necessary because nothing's going in there, right?
Yes.
Okay. The one way with the signage, because that's the only way we're gonna be able to do the one way is with signage, bringing people in the front. Signage leading them around the building from bu- buses and trucks.
And the the applicants will need to inform their tenants of the change in the traffic pattern. Their tenants will have to contact whoever the dumpster, the trash haulers are to say, hey, there's a new way, but.
Looking for revisions. What what are we putting on the plans? Do you know what I'm saying? And and so the stuff in the north isn't gonna happen. One way around for trucks and buses, then getting just to the southwest corner. I'm just trying to get clear, southeast corner. It sounds like the board doesn't want the bus drop off at the sidewalk. It sounds like the board doesn't want the bus drop off at the sidewalk along the rear of the building. I believe, and that, and I guess my next step is I still think it's a good idea for buses to drop off at a sidewalk or pull off area, just in terms of safety, kids stepping down off a bus, stepping back onto a curb. So that's the one thing.
I think what we just talked about, Liz, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but what we talked about is getting the bus around to the front of the building, which is actually the proper south side of the building, where the door actually is, and there's an overhang. And possibly eliminating two parking spaces there, just striping that as the loading, unloading zone. And then eliminating that's the curbing in the back, which would just further narrow the building. So we're agreeing.
Spoken too quickly when I said all that, because I, I said stripe the parking areas for, because I have a dedicated, I love that you said unloading zone. You do unload kids, but I just said drop off instead.
Understood. So there will be some kind of a pull off on the south end. In other words, the actual.
Just to stop, yeah, well, they'll stop in the front of the door. As if, you know, someone, it was, let's pretend it's Williams and there's a door there and it's raining and someone pulls up and runs into the door. So where that door is on the south side will be the main entrance for the daycare. And I think it would be most appropriate that the drop off is in front of the door where people would be waiting to receive the children versus on the corner of the building.
Down a long sidewalk. I agree.
Extended curved area to.
No, just striping, just, we're gonna eliminate two spaces and we'll just stripe it.
That's what I wanted to get through. Okay, those are my main points. And then cars can come and go as they please. It's really just buses and trucks that will have the one way thing with the signs.
Well, I think the intention is to make it one way all the way around. And as I think Anne had indicated, cars will probably squeak through there and, you know, come in and out opposite the one way restriction. And so that will happen because those are tenants that, you know, may come in and out. But for all intensive purposes, it's one way clockwise around the building.
I mean, I, I actually think that there's not a lot of cars that go around that building that way right now, except for employees. And there are only about, I think, seven or eight cars or vehicles when we were there today. So I, once you train people to go around, in other words, it's not like customers are going to Williams. These are parents who will also be dropping off their children. So once you say, hey, you come up, you take a left, you go around the backside of the building and come by, those cars will depart, because there's not a lot of parking associated with this use either. I don't see a lot of, I see mostly parents idling in cars, you know, on the north side where they are right now. Tad actually utilized this location for one of her children. And Tad, did you, did you park there or did you?
The, it was very confusing. It was a long time ago. It was when it was a medical facility. And it was always crowded, drop off was always confusing. You'd have to cross from the far side of the parking lot where you could park to the, to the door. And there was always traffic going through there because drop off happened. Pickup and drop off was like a 15 minute period every so many hours. So it was very confusing. And, and I don't think the site has been operated like that recently. And I, I drive through there occasionally and I've never encountered that kind of confusion again.
That's, that's what I was gonna say. I mostly just see a very orderly drop off. I remember when it was more chaotic. And I think just requiring it to be one way will make it not chaotic. You're gonna just wait in line till you move up and drop your child off, or the bus drops several children off, et cetera. So, good.
So you want one way, all, all vehicles. I was just gonna, the idea was to have signage.
It's gonna be all vehicles.
For daycare, for everything.
Yep, just around the back.
Yep. And in other words, if you, if you're going to the uses that are in the building that's closest to the light bulb, you can still go it there, park and then drive back out that way. Once you're around the building, it's a one way only and it's a one way along the south side till you exit again, going west or north.
Great. But the, the plans as, as, as Joe Berger's office also allow for two-way traffic to go in from the south end with an arrow turnaround.
I think what we're talking about is, is changing that. Yeah. So we'll change it.
You're gonna get rid of that?
Yes.
Okay, that's very helpful. Okay, good. That clears it up. Thanks.
You're welcome.
So we need to revise the motion to say revised. Revised.
Yeah, I, I have it in my note if you want me to just read it and make the motion.
Yeah, great.
All right, I move to refer the Phase Two application to Hyde Park Fire Department, Dutch County Department of Planning and Development, Planning and Development authorized Secretary to send the plans as soon as the revised plan set is received. Motion made by Chris Oliver.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second is Diane Tanapoli.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Nays or abstentions? There being none. Kelly, yes.
I have one more question. Thank you for that. I'm sorry to ask this, but is it possible that we could schedule this project for a public hearing so that we could move this along as well?
It is possible. Will you have new plans developed by November 18th?
Oh, yes.
And make it a motion to set a public hearing for Phase Two of this project.
Wait, how much, how much date? December 2nd?
November 18th, November 18th. That way we can get any public comment in early.
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Anne Dexter.
Anne Tanapoli, second it.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In, any nays or abstentions? Motion carries as well.
Many thanks.
I just like that we're getting closer to this project. If we can see that building start to revise itself and then change these things to make it a better sort of experience for the people who'll be using it, this is also better for everybody. So thank you again. We'll see you, we'll see you in a bit.
Thank you.
Actually, we'll see you still, or am I, sorry. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to extend the time to complete substantial construction of a site plan. I believe this will be introduced by Ms. Dexter. This is for, so that we can extend the time in which they have to redo the building that's to the north of the old Grand Union where the pet feeds plus is right now.
Correct. Resolution to extend the time to complete substantial construction of a site plan for Hyde Park Town Center North Buildings Three, Four and Five. Resolution number sixteen dash fifteen J. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby extends the time to complete substantial construction of the project as shown on the site plan to and including August 24th, 2022.
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. Seconding it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? There being none, the motion carries. And Kelly, last resolution, this will be to approve the Phase One exterior modification of the main building for Park Plaza. And just to note, I should have added this, but we did hold the public hearings open just to receive public comment. We received none for either application. So we're ready to move. I believe Stephanie is introducing this.
Yeah, resolution to grant site plan, site plan amendment approval, Hyde Park Town Center, Park Plaza. Phase One. Resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen A. Whereas, whereas, times eleven, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grant site plan amendment approval to Phase One of the site plan set, subject to the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow.
Second, Anne Dexter.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? The motion carries. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Great to see you. We'll see you before Thanksgiving at the next meeting.
Very well. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
As I, I think as I wrote to everybody earlier, we did delete a second condition because at the beginning of the debris, and it seemed more associated with the site plan, the architecture. So, and that's why I took all the pictures. I wanted to make sure everybody knew. I did not realize that Brent had gone back there as well. So, because it is messy. It's, it's kind of messy and sloppy, but I will hope that, I think, striping really will help. The next item on the agenda, Jeffrey Groves Estates Resubdivision. We are amending conditions of approval for the resubdivision and the site plan. And Neil, Councilman Kretner could put this up on the screen, this resolution. It's a really long one. All the board members have already had a chance to read it. But we could actually have Mr. Pickett is going to introduce this. Do so just to move to adopt the corrected resolution. Councilman Kretner, if you can scroll down, so anybody could have a chance to read it. Victoria, do you want to describe what the changes were real quickly?
Yes. Um, after review of the resolution and the plans that have been submitted and all of the changes on all of the page numbers, there were a few housekeeping items that needed to be cleaned up. So, condition four previously referred to needing plans from DCWWA, that's just been moved down to be a condition of approval of certificate of occupancy. Let me pull, can you, let me just pull it up on my computer. So I can follow. Um, well, the other ones are all housekeeping. So either Tad and Pete had determined that the item had been met, that the page number had changed, and so it was no longer required, or we moved the condition down to be a condition of CO. According to Tad and Pete, this will allow the plans to now be signed.
Mr. Kaufman, any comments before we?
I appreciate the board's review of this.
Thank you. So, Mr. Pickett, can you make a motion?
Make a motion, resolution to amend the conditions of the site plan approval, Jeffrey Grove Estates, November 4th, 2020, resolution two thousand eighteen dash oh four M. And we're moving to adopt the corrective and amended resolutions.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Chris Oliver.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Everyone had a chance to read all this and go through it. Basically, there really were a lot of housekeeping items, and the two that got moved to the bottom are basically just conditions of CO that will allow them to proceed and be to sign the plan. So, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations, Lou.
Oh boy, thank you so much. So, okay, we'll be in touch with Tad to move this thing along.
That's the next step. Good luck. Looking forward to see, it's, looking forward to seeing a shovel in the ground.
Yeah, me too. Have a great holiday, guys.
You too.
You too.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda, after we last read the approval resolution for Verizon Cell Tower to be located at 113 South Quaker, the applicant's attorney, Mr. Olson, more or less objected to what he thought was a little vagueness in the resolution. So after pondering on it, Ms. Paldaro agreed and revised it. It was sent to Mr. Olson today, who approved it. Or had no issues, I should say. So this is another one where, rather than having to read a really long resolution, the change was really minor. It just involved the getting an erosion and sediment control permit. It's more clear, it's actually a little bit clearer, I will say that, but more importantly, it's actually stricter in many ways, but Mr. Olson liked it. So I'm very happy with it, put it that way. Anybody had any issues with, with the change? It was so minor. So Chris is going to introduce this one. It'll be done similarly to the last time, just to move to adopt the corrected resolution. Chris?
I'd like to make a motion to move to accept the corrected resolution. Chris Oliver.
That resolution number, the, the new resolution number, I should say, is, I can find it, sorry, two oh two oh dash oh three C. Is there a second?
Seconded, Brent Pickett.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. And thanks, Victoria, for cluing us in as to how to do that, so that we could speed this up a little bit and spend more time on the first application. One of the last items on the agenda is a new project, Dance Works Two. It's a workshop. And because we collected no escrow, the applicant, the consultants are free to leave. So Pete, Liz, Victoria, and Dad, if anybody wants to go, oh, Tad, you're gonna stay with us probably, or you can stay if you're so interested and want to hear. So.
Great input on Park Plaza tonight. Thank you. Good night.
It was, we spent a long time, but it was good. And this is a central portion of our town. We should be spending time on this. Like Anne said, it was fascinating. I, I'm very proud again of the work that we do together as a body. The idea that we are thinking about the traffic thing and how to protect kids is really important. It's, it's a valued part of what we do. Even though I think most of us want to get on and just say, let's make the town prettier, it's a lot more involved than that on the planning board. So anyway, thank you, Liz. Ms. Marko is here. She's the owner operator of Dance Works Two. She's also, I believe, a Hyde Park native. All of you, I think, have had a chance to take a look at the plans.
Yeah.
In essence, we've been working with Ms. Marko for quite a while as she made the decision to purchase the property. But this was the old Stimson's Pools from way back when on nine, thirteen hundred and nine G. And it had gotten kind of sloppy, I must say, over the years with, we'll call it an accretion of just stuff. The prior owner that purchased it from the last one, or the most recent owner, I should say, did a great job under Tad's direction of cleaning up the site. I visited it several times with Clay's permission and was shocked at how much better it looked than the last time Diane and I had walked it, maybe a year and a half ago. So, in essence, this isn't, we, what we allowed them to do, or Tad, I should say, has approved it to go forward, is instead of a full-blown site plan, because she's not proposing any changes to the exterior. Nothing, except for some landscaping, some fencing for screening, and also playground equipment and a fence around that, so that, I guess, siblings can go out and play. That's it. There's no other, there's no physical change to the building or anything else. So what she's done is supply details of the screening that's going to be used in the back, the arboretum, the fencing that'll go around for the Victorian Pickett fencing for around the playground, the privacy fencing at the northern edge of the property, and then you see a little bit of the playground equipment. And then she's just revised the Dance Works Two signage. This, I think, might be an older version.
Yes, that's the older version.
Sorry, Kelly just designed, when this current, or this older version, we explained would not fly. The image of the dancer was too large, but at height and width without a variance. So she's changed that around, that I think today. So we're going to, we're going to refer this as well to county planning, because this does have to be referred to county planning because of its location on the road. Kelly, I just spoke a lot. Do you want to add anything?
No, I think you did a wonderful. Our goal is to just make the building look beautiful, keep in line with what the town would like the town to look like, and make it a safe space for all.
And I want to say this was done the correct way. Kelly and her Realtor met with Dawn, met with Tad and me. This has been kind of moved forward all along the way. Ted, do you want to add anything to what I had to say? Okay. Questions from board members? Stephanie, I'll start with you, or comments?
Just, I, I wish you good luck. I'm delighted. And, and especially during these times that you're going to be running a dance program. So I, I think it's great.
I might add, her dance program is important during these times. She's actually, her classes are used sort of as daycare too, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I figured that's what the playground was about. So best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And she's had a successful business here for years in different locations. This will be her first standalone. So good to see our business expanding in our town. Ms. Wiser, comments? You're muted still, Anne?
Weird, my space bar is usually what I use. And just want to, just jump on with Stephanie and say that, you know, we're really thrilled that you're gonna, you're opening up your business here, relaxing, a standalone. We like seeing nine G, getting, you know, getting some love. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Particularly this corner, the residents should be very happy, because it's been pretty, it was really out of control. I don't know any other way to put it, with a mix of uses that were never approved. Mr. Oliver, comments?
Congratulations, especially during these times. When will you be opening and taking new dancers? Not for me, my, my daughter.
We are open. We haven't done any of these proposed projects yet, because we were awaiting, waiting approval. But we are open. We do have COVID restrictions, but we are open and.
Very good. Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, she's been able to, she's been able to open through Dawn during this time, but she wants to install the rest of the changes, obviously, to make it a site plan worthy site, or make it to approve. Yeah.
We're currently driving almost forty-five minutes for. We're currently driving almost 45 minutes for Liliana's dance, so.
Let's get her a bike.
You have a lot closer option. Ms. Dexter, comments?
Um, again, welcome, that's a, when I drove by and I saw, I think you were there one night late. Cleaning it out the inside and I went, oh, that's the perfect use for that building, you know, I love when these things. You know, it's, I don't know, I used to volunteer at the local animal shelter and some, sometimes there's that, that animal that doesn't get adopted until the perfect. House walks in and says, no, you, you've been waiting for me, so I feel like this is a great match. Um, I just had a question about, so the signage and Ted, I'm glad you're here. Um, I noticed right now you have some signs direct, uh, doing directing, you know, that the south one is the entrance and the north one is the exit. Do you need additional signage to help with that?
No, we were just using that for a couple of weeks as we've only been open for a couple of weeks, but I actually uh will be taking them down, we did a video, I did a video pretending to be a driver. And showed all of our, I, I walked it and showed our, our uh dance families exactly how we would like traffic to flow. Uh, to keep it just safe for everybody and also safe for 9G so that, you know, there is. Um, on the southern end, there's some overgrown bushes on someone else's property. Um, I think my husband actually may have even put a note in their mailbox, like to say, hey, can we cut your bushes just to give us a little bit of viewing? Um, but just those signs are going to be temporary, they're there for just in the opening weeks.
Okay, you wouldn't want to have something kind of permanent that, um, no. I just keep like, I see Ted head going like that, um, yeah. Okay, that was all my, that was my only question.
Okay, there's ways around it.
Yep.
Some of that maybe because she would need a DOT permit to put up and we didn't want her to have to go through that stuff.
Oh, okay, alright.
That's basically it, sorry, I was just gonna spill the beans on that one because otherwise it's a good idea, but Kelly explained that, you know, they don't have walk-ins. These are classes that people will call about at first so she can explain things to, as she said, the dance families, so, anyway, but that's a good question, Anne, because we did talk about it the first time too. So, thank you, Ms. Tanapoli, comments?
Congratulations and it, you must be so excited at this time where um. Things are not always the most positive, I was curious, what's the age range of your students?
So we accept students three years to 18 years. Yeah, so I have a lot of students that I've had, I actually now have students of students. I'm, I'm at that age where I now have children of students that I've taught. Um, sometimes I have them for 15 years and, and it is hard to let go of them, but I do have that and I also, we do have some adult program where we teach Zumba classes.
Oh, interesting.
Yes.
Good to know.
Yes.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett, comments?
No, it's just short, we, thank you very much and wish you the best.
Thank you.
So, um, I should, I, I should add, I didn't really know what you looked like until now because when we've met all the time. It was like, oh, she's, she's really nice looking, pretty, anyway. Um, so we have a resolution prepared tonight and because I made a last minute change and the last minute change is very minor. From what everybody else saw, I just referred to the sheet that would detail everything at the very bottom, so I'm just gonna introduce this myself. A dense resolution classifying the action referring to plan such that just kind of planning and economic development, Dance Works 2, 1309G. November 4th, 2020, resolution 2020 dash 22. Whereas, 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 whereas is, now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type two action or seeker. Project has been determined by New York State to have no impact on the environment, DAIS will not be prepared. Two directs the secretary to refer the survey and overlay with photo sheet detailing signage, fences, landscaping and playground equipment. The Duchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239M or the general minister law. Do I have a second?
Second Diane Tanapoli.
Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 And may I get a motion to set the public hearing for December 2nd to give county planning its, all its time that they need.
A hereby uh motion to. To set a public hearing for Dance Works 2 for December 2nd, 2020.
I will second the motion, Brent Pickett.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett, all in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
No nays or abstentions, Kelly, do you have any questions for us, we're gonna get this started. And then we'll set a public hearing and then we, once we hold a public hearing because we're meeting under these COVID restrictions, we allow a sometime period to lapse for written comment, just. The reason why we're doing this is, it's legally prudent. So if someone just happens to turn on their TV tonight, because this is a broadcast as well. And saw it and said, wait a moment, I want to speak, if we close the public hearing, they wouldn't be allowed to and the executive order indicates we have to have some time period for them. So once we close, well, I think we're gonna shorten it to seven days as opposed to uh 10. Um, and then we will take action after that, so we'll, we'll have you through before Christmas, but you're already open anyway, so. Thank you, I hope you enjoy, I know you, you were stuck here the whole meeting and I apologize.
It was interesting.
Well, as it turns out, I thought we wouldn't, I thought we would get through the first portion of it more quickly. Uh, because Kelly actually had to hire a sub, she didn't get to teach her class tonight. So I said, if she teaches at 6:30, I'm like, ah, no, 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 you're right, I apologize that you missed it and your kids, but I'm glad you enjoyed it, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
It is now, I was just notified that it is now officially seven days, it will be waiting not 10 anymore, so, thank you, thank you for joining us and we'll see you in December. Um, in the meantime, happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, same to you all, thank you.
Thank you.
I just love when, when businesses expand like this, they're actually homegrown, our own people operating them, it's just, to me, really great, so. Um, the last two items we have are to approve minutes, uh, I want, just as a quick aside. The resolutions I normally do are the comment letters, they're kind of in process and the resolutions that I normally write are really easy ones. I haven't done one of these in a while and I gotta tell you, it took me, I was rusty, it took me almost three hours just to pull everything together, to get the grid numbers, all of it. The reason I'm saying this is, I, I told Victoria today when I spoke to her, I'm like, I forget how hard this is, thank you for doing all that work all the time, whoa. The second one will be easier because I already laid everything out the first one, but, you know, I'm usually doing waivers or something like that, this was a little different, so, anyway. Um, everyone had a chance to review the minutes of October 7th. And uh, who would like to move to accept them?
I'll make that motion, Anne Dexter.
Vice Chair?
And I'll second it, Stephanie Wasser.
Uh, any further discussion, everyone can vote on this except for Mr. Pickett, he's abstained because he wasn't present, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Only one extension, so the motion carries. And I need a motion to approve the minutes for October 22nd, that Cynthia somehow just sped right through and got them out quickly.
So moved, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you.
Second, Anne Dexter.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now quickly before we adjourn. Cynthia suggested that we have a virtual holiday party this year. For our last December meeting and I was wondering if you want me to make some eggnog and meat at the parking lot sometime that afternoon? And I'll pick up some, raise a glass at the end, if that sounds like a good idea.
That's great.
We can all get drunk.
We'll be at home, we'll be at home. So we'll plan on that then for our last December meeting and I'll tell the consultants, we can just socially distance meet and I'll hand, I'll have a little individual something or other for everybody to take home.
Perfect.
Cause I, I, that's, I've started.
Thank you, Michael, that's awesome.
Well, it just seems depressing not to, not to do something that we normally do and we can't do what we normally do of relax and enjoy each other's company at the year.
Snow or shine?
Snow or shine.
Can we make sure that it's not live streamed?
Hoping for snow.
If it's like snow, then I will make sure I make it the day before and you can just put it in the refrigerator, it lasts for, as Ted can tell you, it actually lasts a long time because the. Alcohol more or less stops anything from doing anything.
Oh no, it doesn't last a long time.
Well, that's a different reason. Okay, so thanks, everybody, we'll plan on that and may I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, Chris Oliver?
Second Diane Tanapoli.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thanks for standing Ted, just in case there were questions about Dance Works 2, have a nice evening, everybody, thank you.
Bye bye.
Good night.